July meeting of the mayor and council to order. If you'll all stand with me, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing, Dr. Landrum from Mighty Moores Chapel Methodist Church is going to do our invocation.
Bow your heads if you will. Most gracious and wonderful Almighty God, as we gather in this meeting to discuss matters that impact this community, we seek your guidance, dear God. We seek your wisdom and blessings as we engage in dialogue and decision making for the betterment of this great community. Grant us this ability to listen with open hearts, to speak with respect and clarity, and to come into agreement to serve the common good. We ask these prayers in your precious name. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments on the -- okay, all right. You have the minutes from our June meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is mayor and council announcements and comments. Council Lady Bridges, we'll let you start.
Good evening. I just want to say I had the pleasure Saturday night to be with Ms. Irene Keith. She turned 100 years old, and that's honorary. And it was a good party, and they did the fireworks for her. I mean, you know, we got to give people their flowers while they live, and I just want to say it was just awesome. And I had a rough evening, but I made it.
Councilman Knoblauch.
Was that word honorary? Ordinary. How do you spell that?
It doesn't matter.
Well, we had so much fun at the Fourth of July picnic, or not picnic but parade. We had fun at the picnic too, but the parade was just incredible. I hope most of you could go out there and take a child or grandchild, or that you went and acted like a child, because it was sure fun. We threw candy, and we threw more candy, and then we threw more candy.
And you got in trouble.
I got in a little trouble, but not much. But it was a great day, and I don't know how many people were there. We got any estimates, thousands of people, but Lord bless us with a pretty day, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Councilman Lynder.
Thank you, Mayor, but I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. It occurred to me when we were pulling up that we are halfway through the year, so when we meet again in August, everybody will be getting ready to start back to school. So I hope everyone has a great remainder of the summer, and I enjoyed the parade as well, and Bob has still got candy.
Did you hide some candy, Bob?
A little.
Oh, I saw the Smarties. I know where those came from. Well, I just want to say thank you to the Sostoma Club for, again, hosting the people's parade. I think that's something in our community that we look forward to every year, and it was a great turnout. It really was. And the weather, you couldn't have asked for it to be any better, because it wasn't 100 degrees like it was last year, so we do appreciate that. And I do, I want to say thank you to Ms. April Saunders for continuing our summer events. The kids are loving the movies. I think there's, what, two a week?
At least one.
At least one, sometimes two. So if you know somebody that's got small children, take them up to the amp and let them watch the movies for free. And we have a big concert this weekend coming up, Mother's Finest, yeah. If you know who that is, it'll tell your age. Anyway, I hope you all can come out and enjoy it, and maybe it won't be 100 degrees. All right, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to, I had the opportunity today to go to our pastor's lunch, and Chief Richards, many, many years ago, had the foresight and the vision, he and Pastor Dortz, to create this group that brings folks from all walks of life, all different parts of town, and just learn about the different things that we have going on in our city, the different nonprofits that we have, talk about issues, and it's a non-threatening, non-accusatory environment, and just done a great job with it. And as I said, was, had the vision to do it well before other folks were trying to bring communities together like that, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate what we got to hear there today. And as Mayor's right, and Councilman Gibbs stated as well, school starting back in a month or so, but we still got a lot of stuff going on this summer, concerts, got a night market Friday night over at our Lake Shore Park. There was hundreds and hundreds of people there at the last one. We're hoping for a great event Friday night, and then Mother's Finest on Saturday, and I'm hoping that I get to enjoy both of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, make sure you go over to the Lake Shore Park and enjoy the new facilities that we have over there, and take advantage of the food trucks, and all the vendors, and music, and just a great time to be in Carrollton on Friday night. Okay, at this time, I'll Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items of the agenda for consideration.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the first item on our agenda is a rezoning request for 1302 Highway 27 North.
Yes, the first item is a request to create a non-residential...
Miss Studdard, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Get out, Mayor read through her.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot. Okay, all right. When we're having rezoning, there's protocol for that, and so I just want to read it to you so everybody understands what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with the Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed a total of 10 minutes of public input. This means that all those speaking in favor of the request shall have a total of 10 minutes, and all those speaking in opposition of the request shall have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against the time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already read. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak, indicating first their support of or opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by the opponents to the application at the hearing. So now we all know how we will operate this. And before we do that, I'm sorry, I want to recognize our scout troop. Guys, we all stand up. This is Scout Troop 29 out of Bethany Church. We have Scout, I'm sorry, hi? Thirty-nine. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Scout Master John Lanson and Joseph Turner, who are guiding these young men in a great effort for community, and they're here tonight to attend a public meeting. So thank you, guys, for coming. Okay, now, Ms. Studdard.
All right, the first item on your agenda is a rezoning request for a non-residential plan development with requested waivers. The project is at 1302 Highway 27 North, and there is a proposed Chick-fil-A. It's just north of the car dealership above Ingalls. And the request is to create a non-residential PD or a commercial PD, and to allow relief from the prohibition against multiple parking aisles in front of a commercial building, and then also relief from the required 10-foot landscaping strip along the front property line. They would like to reduce that down to four feet. The planning commission reviewed this request during their June meeting, and they recommended unanimous approval of both the planned development and also the requested waivers. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Okay. Mr. Stallings, are you here? Do you want to address the group?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real quick.
All right, go right ahead.
Randall Stallings with Forsight Group, address is 3740 Da Vinci Court, Suite 100, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. I work for Forsight Group. We are the civil engineers representing Chick-fil-A tearing, and I will also do the design. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. As mentioned, the site is located between the Chevy dealership and the church. The name escapes me, but the church just...
First Christian Church. I mean, Christian Church. I'm not sure what that is.
Church of Christ.
Church of Christ. Okay, I'm sorry.
So it's the lot right there in between where we will be developing. Staff has stated we're requesting the rezoning. We rezoned appropriately, but for the request of the waivers, the two waivers, allowing the parking between the building and the right-of-way, more than one drive aisle, and for the landscape setback, this was the appropriate way to request that. Really quickly, the two, the main reason is safety and additional stacking. So if the building is up closer to the road, we have less stacking for drive-through, and when they exit, it's very close to the highway. Also, everyone that parks must cross the drive-through lanes to get into the building, so Chick-fil-A would rather not do that. They would rather have the drive-through around the back of the building and have their pedestrians not get involved with that. Also, GDOT requires that there's a certain spacing on the movements off of the highway. So that's the main reason for that. The landscape item is due to, there's a, if you have the site plan, there's a weird jog in of the property line along 27, and just to enable us to develop a little bit more land in that area, we're requesting that drop. And that 10-foot is from the C2 district. It's not necessarily a PD-required setback. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, or anybody has anything else, so.
All right, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. The second item we have is another rezoning request at 295 Wilson Drive.
Yes, ma'am. This request is to rezonate a property from R-20 to R-10, that single-family residential with a 20,000-square-foot lot minimum to single-family residential with a 10,000-square-foot lot minimum. The purpose of this request is to subdivide an existing lot in a residential area over by Lake Carroll. The request is made by Joel Contreras, and it's approximately .47 acres. The lot itself right now, there's currently a home under construction, and the purpose of the request is to subdivide it and then construct an additional home at the intersection. The planning commission also reviewed this request during their June planning commission meeting. This request actually comes to you without a recommendation. The planning commission, the only motion made at the planning commission meeting was a motion to deny, and it was tied, and no additional motions were made. So it does come to you without a recommendation. And I do believe the applicant's here to speak.
Okay.
We tried to build this house if you let us build it, used for the sister loft for my wife, and I think it's plenty of room in there, but I said to you, try to build a house that I want to use it for the summer. Let's see, I think it's plenty of room for build a house, but I don't know for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this rezoning? Okay, just come to the microphone, please.
My name is Jan Robinson at 109 K Lane. We live just up the street from this property. And I just want to say that when someone buys property and moves into a neighborhood, they should plan and build in line with existing rules, regulations, and within the existing zoning codes, and not ask to have those rules changed or granted an exception. The neighborly thing to do is to abide by the existing rules, just like everyone else, no matter what the reason is for the rezoning request. Also, I believe that granting the zoning, a rezoning request for this property would set a precedent for others to ask for rezoning in the area, and most of the residents that I have spoken to about this specific request are not in favor of this request and desire to have R-20 as the, remain the code for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Okay, is there someone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is John Fletcher. We live at 211 Lakewood Drive, which is about 1,000 feet from the property in question. We have two concerns regarding this request. First, the property values of surrounding homeowners would be unfairly diminished if, excuse me, if approved. Wholesale petitions for reappraisal would not be surprising. Second, we believe allowing this change would set a terrible precedent, and as noted in the local paper notice of this meeting, I'll read the last sentence with my glasses, sorry. These zoning changes are significant, as they can influence the future development and land use patterns within the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to add anything? Okay. Oh, okay, you can go next, sir. Yeah.
My name's Tom Wilcox, and I live over on Lakewood Drive also, approximately a block from this request for Wilson Drive, the rezoning of Wilson Drive. Opening, in my opinion, opening up changes in square footage of lots will, as this gentleman over here mentioned, it may decrease property values. And also, if taken to the maximum, with a lot of things being packed into our neighborhood, I feel that any, any changes in our particular area will be a threat to our quality of life in this area of District 2.
Okay, thank you.
Ward 2, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time me coming to one of these.
It's okay.
So basically, I live at 10, my name's Charity Dyer. I live at 107 Wilson Circle, which is right around the corner. A lot of people on that circle, I mean, we've all been talking about this, and it's kind of like one of those things where it's, that area is more for ordinary family to have a front yard, a backyard. We didn't want houses piled on top of each other and so close to next to each other, like how they're building like the tiny homes on the other side of Bankhead. We don't want, because it'll make it more busy, for one thing, and our kids, they play around there, and I know that street is already busy, and building another house right there will make it even more busy. My son just bought property a couple of years ago across the street. He plans on building a house there. I mean, it's right, kind of diagonal from the property, so we're just trying to make it more to where it's a family community, rather than having a bunch of tiny homes and duplexes, because that brings in more, to me, it brings in more riffraff or more whatever. I'd rather it stay on the other side of Stewart Street and not on our side. I mean, that's, that's my opinion on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Tommy Harrison. I've known Joel for about three years now, and all he's trying to do is help his family that's up north come to visit with them and stay with them. Everybody keeps talking about family. Well, that's what he's looking at, is building a summer home for his family. He's not looking at building rental or no kind of tiny house or nothing like that. He's just trying to help his family out also.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Harris, do you have anything you want to rebuttal with? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to say something first, and then I'll be happy to do a motion. I will say that the house that has been built there is a very nice house that's been built on that lot. I'm in agreement with the people that have spoke tonight about not changing the zoning for that area. That zoning takes a, is a vast area zoning. You know, it encompasses a lot of neighborhoods in that vicinity on that side of town, and I think it would be a mistake to change the zoning in that area. I do think that the house that's been built there is a very nice house, and I think that it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood, but trying to put another house in there is going to really make it difficult for people to be able to see coming in and out of the side streets there. And there's just a lot of, lot of negatives to changing zoning in an area where it's an established zoning, and it encompasses such a large area. So I would recommend that we deny the request for the rezoning tonight, and that would be my motion. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The request is denied. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Resolution 10-2024, the City of Carrollton ADA Transition Plan.
Yes, as we reviewed during your June work session, we are ready to adopt our first ADA Transition Plan. As you're well aware, to be in compliance with Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we are required to have this plan in place. This plan is kind of a, I would call it a mini comprehensive plan for ADA compliance. I know you guys have had an opportunity to review this plan, so I won't go through it in detail, but at this time, we are asking that you adopt Resolution 1024, which will officially adopt the ADA Transition Plan. This plan will be in place for three years. We will update that every three years.
I'd like to add, too, that Erica and a team, she assembled several other department heads, and been working on this for about six months to get it all together, do an audit of all of our buildings, sidewalks, things of that nature, and they've done a really, they've done a really nice job with it. So thank you for your effort.
And just to make sure everybody understands, this is part of the American Disability Act, and we want to make sure that everybody has accessibility to wherever they want to go in our city. All right, so do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is board appointment for our Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, Kristy Garrett's term expired in May of this year for the Historic Preservation Commission. As you're aware, the Historic Preservation Commission limits terms to two consecutive terms at one time, and she is just finishing up her second term. During your work session, you recommended Ed Fouts as a potential Historic Preservation Commission member, and he is in the Historic District. I think he will be an active and involved member. At this time, we recommend you appoint him to this board.
Okay, all right. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Ed Hout being appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Hout to our Historic Preservation Commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.